Call the order, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Here.
Ms. Ruska?
Here.
Mr. Jacob?
Here.
Ms. Towne?
Here.
Here.
Here. I don't believe we have any recognitions this evening.
No recognitions this evening. No FOIA's. We said we were tabling district goal setting and the evaluation for now.
Correct. So moving on to visitor's statement, first opportunity. Is anyone here for visitor's statements? No? Okay. Wanted to make sure we looked around. Any additional discussion items to add to the agenda? Anyone? Over here? We'll move right into reports, President's report. I do want to take just a few quick minutes, less than minutes if I may, and make a couple of statements about now that the class of 2021 has walked across the stage. We were all at that graduation last week. Have had some reflection about it. And the 2020-21 school year has certainly been a chance for many of us to examine our priorities in our jobs and our homes and here at RB as well. And at the same time, 2021 has also forced us to engage in the growth that comes from looking at different perspectives. And, excuse me. Doesn't mean that we agree with all the perspectives that we heard in the last year, but we listened and we learned and hopefully we responded with a fair amount of grace and understanding. So I believe it puts us all in a position to do the work we're here to do in the 21-22 school year. And so I just want to personally thank all of the staff and the teachers, the students, the families, the parents, the administration for all of the effort that took us through this past school year. And I look forward to working with everyone next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report, Curriculum Advisory Council, no update. Facilities Advisory Council, I included in the board packet some of the handouts that were covered at the meeting. But tonight you'll approve the rental agreement. This is an annual review. We usually update our fees every two years. Obviously, coming out of a pandemic where we pretty much had no rentals for about 13 months, we're not adjusting anything except for putting in a little change in language to cite that additional safety measures may be in part of the rental requirements. Life safety update is provided in that update and also shows you that we have some minor work to be completed and also where we are at financially. Airmark quarterly business review. As a reminder, we outsource our maintenance and custodial services through Airmark. So they provide a quarterly review. We usually put these in the board packet and the Facilities Advisory Council just goes through them. Usually, once a year, we'll have them, we'll have our Facilities Manager and Kristen do a short report out to the board. That usually happens at near the end of first semester. And then there is a Green Initiatives update included in that packet as well. The basis for the car chargers, electric car chargers are being installed in the parking lot. The bases have already been installed, so we're still through in the installation process. And that should be completed here before July. Finance Advisory Council, no update. Obviously, we're looking for the board to approve the tentative budget tonight. We have two new board, the two new board members are going to meet with Kristen and myself in the middle of June to just go through the budget, get a little more understanding of how the process works. Personnel Advisory Council, no update. We're still interviewing some certified and non-certified vacancies, so not much to report out there. Policy Advisory, no update. However, you'll see in the board packet tonight, IASB Policy 6:185. This is an optional policy. It's something that we wanted to put on the agenda. We want the board to review it in the event that we need to adopt it in July. We have a board policy that requires us to review policies twice before we do any adoption. And with 6:185, in the event that the state guidance comes out and we do need to offer some type of remote instruction, even if that's through West 40, legal counsel was kind of lukewarm on whether or not we needed to approve this policy. So they thought it would be a good idea for us to just have it on the board agenda, review it once tonight. We could review it again in July. Hopefully, when things are a little more clear, if we need to approve it, we could. And then purchase sale, lease of land, no update. Anything with the zoo has been tabled, obviously, for the summer. That's it for the superintendent report.
Thank you. Any questions? And we'll move on to Dr. Smetana.
Good evening. The attached reports in Board Book will provide the board with financial information for the month of May, which represents 92% of a fiscal year. On Board Book Page 4 begins the monthly summary report. The total operating revenue for the month was $1,684,286, with 15.9% coming from property tax and CPPRT, 15% coming from federal and state reimbursements, and then 11% coming from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding. Total operating expenditures for the month were $2,146,892, with 75% towards salary and benefits, 11% for purchase services, primarily food service, only for RB, but also for the satellite schools, and then 6% for other purchases, mostly capital and non-capital items such as the wellness center equipment, as well as some purchases for the music department. We bought a sound system for the choir room, an amp, as well as a marching sousaphone. Looking at the monthly financial statements on Board Book Page 56, the summary of revenue shows that the district has received 106.4% of our budgeted revenue for this year. This percent is higher than this time last year, which was 97.9%. In regards to property tax, we have two line items in the budget through various accounts. One is called prior year, which refers to the fall collection, and then one is called current year, which refers to the spring collection. In the fall, we collected roughly $9.7 million, and in the spring, we collected a little over $11 million. Looking at both of these line items, we, in both line items, have collected 100.4% of what we had budgeted for. There is still some possibility, since the deadline was extended to May, that we could collect some additional money trickling in in the month of June. I'm not sure, since we're not necessarily following our normal pattern of tax collection. And then in a normal year, we budget a little higher in terms of how much money we're actually going to collect. We typically budget at 99% collection rate. This year, we budgeted at 97%. Moving on, the summary of expenditure shows that the district has spent 86.9% of the budgeted expenditures for this year, and that is significantly down from this time last year. 87% is relatively low. So as we're tracking how things come in for the budget for this fiscal year, it's not going to be what we projected. You know, we're continuing to track it. It's hard to predict an actual number right now since I'm not sure what additional revenue is going to come in, either from the federal or state, as well as property tax. And then always for the board's information, I included the Statement of Revenues and Expenditures Report, as well as the Student Activity Account Report. Just keep in mind, when you do look at that report, negative account balances represent positive fund balances. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Kristen, the 80, what is it, 86.9?
87%.
87%? We're not anticipating much more in revenue unless there's some late payments, right? But we do have some big expenditures coming up through June, obviously payroll, any end of the year purchases.
We have payroll, and then we'll have a little over $1 million in expenditures. So I'm anticipating roughly anywhere from $2.5 to maybe 300, or 3...
2 million.
I'm sorry, 3 million in expenditures. You know, we're currently sitting at a little bit, if you look all the way back on Board Book Page 55.
Can we bring the...
If you can go to Board Book Page 55, million. As you can see, we're currently sitting for this fiscal year in our operating funds with a little over $6.5 million. And so it's likely that we will finish this year with a surplus. But it's a little hard to tell. It really, some of this is going to depend on, you know, if we get significant revenue in from property tax or federal or state. That will certainly drive the revenue up.
So I know there's always some discussion about fee collection at the end of the year. How did that look this year, being the year that it was?
I don't have a specific number because not all of the revenue has hit, but we felt like families were, we were collecting somewhat as we would in a normal fiscal year. But I can get an exact number and provide the historicals at the next meeting.
I think for year-end, I'd just like to see how it compares year over year. And then refresh my memory before you get into the budget. What's the projected property tax collection rate for next year? What do we settle on?
We currently have in fiscal year '22, 97% collection rate. We were going to wait to see exactly what we finished at this year before determining if we should increase that to 98 or 99% for next year.
Thank you.
Remember, so tonight when you approve the tentative budget, it's just so that we have a tentative budget in place to start getting through the month of July and August. We will make adjustments to the final budget in July and August and then approve those formally in September.
This is what is required by law. When is the posting?
You have to post it for 30 days and then run a haring in September and approve the budget. But I think that's what Kristen's saying is like, the June 30 actuals, we probably won't get till July. So by that time, you want to have the tentative budget approved, but it may show that 97 is too low, 99 might be better, right? So those are some of the things that we can adjust.
Any more questions? Okay, does that conclude your report?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Dr. Smetana. Dr. Freitas?
Good evening, all board members. Summer school has begun. We have students enrolled in credit recovery courses at no cost. We have students enrolled in credit advancement, health and government. And this week, our Bridge to AP academic programs have begun and also camp college. I want to thank all the summer school staff. Ms. Hughes, Ms. Prince, Ms. Casson, Ms. Minow, Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Lisak, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Franco, Ms. Linkwiss, Mr. Prok, Mr. Baum, and all the coaches that will be hosting all their athletic camps. You know, it means a lot that our teachers are coming during the summer because this is their time, you know, so it really means a lot. So thank you to all the staff, and if I missed anybody, thank you as well. We're still continuing with our summer lunch, with a summer lunch program. It's running from June 2nd and started all the way through August 1st. So our kids are being fed, they're able to take food home. We distribute food Mondays and Wednesdays from 12 to 1:00 near Doray, kind of like a bag lunch kids take, and then they're able to eat it at home. Vaccination opportunities are plentiful, and the information is on our website. Vaccinations are open to students, to any kid ages 12 and up. Guys, please visit our website for more information because there are many vaccination sites throughout our community and in neighboring towns. The online residency portal has been open since June 1st. Prior to coming into RB for an in-person appointment, families must upload their important documents, you know, leases and bills, and then they will be issued a residency appointment in July. Residency dates, July 13, 8 to 12, July 15, 11 to 7, July 29, 11 to 7. And we will be doing our yearbook distribution on July 13th. I know a lot of families still have been asking, when are we going to get the yearbook, Dr. Freitas? July 13th, okay? But guys, also just pay attention just in case because it could change. But right now, we're committed to July 13th. Activities and athletics, we have several summer athletic camps that will be held this upcoming summer. We have all the information on our website. Guys, the summer season, the first and probably only summer season in athletics is just wrapping up. The, as you say, playoffs right now are underway. So we had a tough one today, you know, girls softball took a tough loss, you know, 2-1 in boys' baseball, you know, 4-1. You know, this has been close competitive, but you know, shout out to all the athletes, all the coaches, you know, for making the best of a unique year and for being leaders in the first ever summer season. Again, right, it's their time, but they decided to support our student athletes and our parents. And it's been fun watching them, you know, we always want to win, right? But, you know, even in defeat, seeing the team come together, seeing those good, and really reflecting on the great year that they've had, you know, because we know, right, that there's some schools that didn't have a season, that couldn't, you know, compete in athletics because of their surroundings or the situations. I'm really grateful that we were able to do so. Fully vaccinated students do not need to quarantine, all right? That's very important. Fully vaccinated students do not need to quarantine. And, yep, but well, the few athletic contests are left. We're still streaming them live, but we're almost wrapping up, so. And that concludes my principal's report.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas. I think it's important to continue to mention, I know you put out some social media stuff yesterday. I worked with you and Tammy about the importance of students, parents really taking into consideration the ability to get their students vaccinated. So again, if you're watching, please consider that. And like Dr. Freitas mentioned, students that are fully vaccinated will not need to quarantine next year. And so I know that's a big thing that a lot of parents were concerned about this year, whether it was missing activities or athletics or missing class time. So please strongly consider getting your child vaccinated.
Doctor, I'm sorry, one more, guys. The second dose is June 10th.
At RB.
June 10th here at RB, second dose.
Is there any point of contact at the high school, the nurse or anyone else?
Yeah, so we put up, we put the vaccine.gov up on our website with the slides. So now there's a bulldog on, when you log in automatically to the website, the bulldog pops up with the mask and it says about "Fully vaccinated bulldogs do not need to quarantine anymore." And then click for more information. When you click it, it takes you where you can just put in your zip code and pick the vaccine you want and where you can go within five miles.
And I want to speak more to any parents who are out there with questions or concerns.
I have not received any.
Somebody they can talk to, okay.
We would direct them to the nurse as well, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Have you received any or are you concerned?
No, doctor, I haven't received anything. But everybody's always welcome to reach out to us and we'll be responsive, of course.
Moving on to consent agenda? Yeah?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held May 4th and May 25th, 2021, open and closed. Purchase of a phone system upgrade from Telecom Innovations Group, $16,087.40. Intergovernmental agreement FY22 between West 40 and District 208 for Regional Safe Schools Program and Alternative Learning Opportunities Program is presented in the June 8, 2021 Board Agenda Packet. You need a second.
Give it a second.
Second.
Any discussion on consent items? I think we can go with a roll call.
Well, and then we would also ask on consent, does anybody want to pull any one of them off and vote on them individually?
So during a discussion, is that what you want to do, Laura? Do you have one you want to pull off?
Yeah, I don't want to pull any off, but since we have a consent agenda, that was just, you know, point of order. We'd ask, does anybody want one of those pulled off to talk about individually? Does anybody want anything pulled off? No, perfect, okay.
So roll call, please, thanks.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
And Ms. Zalis?
Yes.
No update on life safety items, President Zalis. And then that takes us to tentative budget.
Great, thank you.
So as Dr. Skankis previously mentioned, there have been very minimal changes to the budget that you see tonight due to not closing out the month until June 4th, which was two days before the board packet was due. The only changes that were made were to reflect some current FTE and staffing of actual personnel. So as a result, we're currently projecting a small deficit for fiscal year '22 of $26,716. I do anticipate that changing. I fully anticipate having a surplus in next year's budget once we start to finalize the budget in July and August. I'm asking for the board to approve the tentative budget tonight so that we can begin spending money in the new fiscal years of July 1st. Tomorrow, the tentative budget will be posted on the district's website for public view. And then every time I present a new budget, an updated budget to the board in July and August, we post the updated version on the website as well. And there are no questions submitted on the budget.
I just have one question, Kristen. So we were real conservative this year because many people lost jobs or jobs were reduced. But then this year, there were the stimulus checks. When we were voting on this budget last year, we had no idea that we would have the stimulus and the different kind of programs that existed. But now going into this budget for next year, I mean, the assumption that there would also be more stimulus or any other help, who knows, may not. Are we going to take that into account and be as conservative with next year's budget?
So there certainly are some items that we are conservative on, and we are going to continue to monitor those as the summer progresses and we get some more information on those. One thing in particular is evidence-based funding. Right now, we're conservative and we've held flat on that. However, you know, there will be more tiered funding. And so until we know exactly what that is, it doesn't make sense just to throw a number in there. And so that's one of the things that we're currently conservative on, real estate taxes. We're currently conservative on, we wanted to see where we came in for property tax collection. As a district, we did get some federal money for next year. So in the budget next year, I have $900,000 in revenue that we'll be receiving. We do anticipate receiving a little over $1 million, but it'll be, some of that won't come until the following fiscal year because it's on a reimbursement cycle. So there are some line items we're conservative on and we're looking at. But we are also trying to be mindful of balancing being conservative with trying to create somewhat as much as possible in a still somewhat of a pandemic situation, an accurate budget.
I think you lay those out pretty well in the revenues and expenditure assumptions that we think we looked at last meeting. I don't know if we have those handy or do you want to look at that?
Yeah.
If that would be helpful.
I believe probably Board Book Page 126 and 127. 126, yes.
Yeah, Laura, if you feel, when you get some time, maybe just review. That kind of lays out what we're recounting on. We shared these last month, also the S R, how we're going to spend the $900,000.
Is that part of S R 3?
Yes.
Yes.
And is there any buzz about like a fourth round?
I think you got to get through 3. 3 hasn't even come out yet.
I'm still waiting, yes, I'm still waiting for 3 so I can fill out the application.
And 3 has to be spent over three fiscal years, so I don't think there's a fourth coming just yet.
Gotcha. Oh, I didn't realize that, sorry.
Well, and I think we did much better in property tax because people did get stimulus, and that helps carry people over. But who knows what next year will look like if the jobs do come back, you know, once the stimulus is out. You know, did we just kick the can down the road? What we thought would happen this year, do we just kick that can down the road and it'll look like what we thought this year would look like? That's what next year will look like. You know, that's kind of what I'm looking at, not necessarily some of the programs.
And that is currently with 97% taken into account, so.
All right, so we're already one concern, we're thinking about going closer to 98 or 99 just because we collected well over 97.
And the money that we didn't collect this year, at some point, we will collect it. And so we do think some of that will trickle in next fiscal year.
Thank you, Kristen.
I guess I'm just waiting for the bottom to fall out. Sorry.
Sure are. All right, we just got to wait and see.
Keeping fingers crossed or something. Any more comments, questions on the budget?
Any motion, Laura?
Okay, sorry. Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the tentative budget for FY22 as presented in the June 8, 2021 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, second by Mr. Jacobs.
Roll call.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Zalis?
Yes. Moving on to new business, payment of bills.
I did not receive any questions submitted by board members, so I think we're okay to approve. Kristen, you had two that were added. Do you want to just touch on those two or is that? Please note voucher 1197 and detailed listing. That's the only thing that was added, so, but no board member submitted any questions on those.
Okay. Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the payment of bills as presented in the June 8, 2021 Board Agenda Packet.
Let me get a second.
Second.
Second, Bill Durkin.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
And Ms. Zalis?
Yes. Final calendar, Dr. Skankis.
We go, every year, you know, the board approves a calendar in January for the next school year. But when you get through the actual school year, you have to just approve the final calendar. It accounts for all the days that we were in school session this year, whether remote or in person, institute days, et cetera. So this is more or less a formality.
Hopefully, in the couple of years to come, this will drop off, right? There won't be emergency days that need to be accounted for. I don't know.
Well, you still have to approve a final calendar every year at the end of school, yeah.
Sure, sure. Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the final 2020-2021 school calendar with the emergency days of May 27th, May 28th, and June 1st, June 2nd, June 3rd eliminated to be submitted to the Illinois State Board of Education as presented in the June 8, 2021 Board Agenda Packet. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gasko.
Any questions, any discussion? Seeing none?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
And Ms. Zalis?
Yes. Facility rental agreement.
Again, this is a formality. As I stated in my superintendent's report, the only addition was like one line under additional safety requirements may be required due to COVID-19. Otherwise, all fees and charges have remained the same for this upcoming fiscal year.
Ready to read? Okay, cool. Man, we are killing it. Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the facilities use agreement as presented in the June 8, 2021 Board Agenda Packet. Second, please.
Second.
Second, Mr. Durkin. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none? Roll call.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
And Ms. Zalis?
Yes. Girls cross-country team overnight camp trip.
First read for the Board of Education. It's your decision on whether or not you want to approve this today or wait till the July 13th meeting. The trip is not till August 13th and 14th. Just so the board, just to remind you, if any team or club or activity or school event is going over, unless it's something for a state series, a specific state series, any kind of field trip out of state or more than 200 miles or overnight needs board approval. So more or less a formality, but provides you an opportunity to look over a trip. I did not receive any questions submitted on the first read. So it's a board decision on whether or not you want some additional time to review it and approve it at the July meeting, or if you'd like to approve it tonight.
Well, since there were no questions and...
The paperwork looks all in order, right? The paperwork looks all in order, right? And they said that they will have the appropriate gender and number of chaperones, right? And so that has been an issue in the past, but it's not here. And this is a trip that they've made, I think, every year that I've been on the board with no incident, right? I was actually pleasantly surprised to see that they're doing it, right? Which I think is awesome, because I'm sure they're so ready.
I saw that there was obviously a fee. There's a fee that, is that charged each of the athletes, or is that part of, come out of their program funds? How is that funded?
Per student, charged to the student.
Per student, okay.
So at no cost to the district?
Correct.
But since this is the first field trip that the new members are looking at, I mean, I think we can do it either as a first read or a vote.
I am all in favor of these type of things.
Okay.
With proper guidance and everything, I am fully in support.
Okay. So with no additional discussion, why don't we?
This isn't all in favor, right, Mary Ann? Because there's no...
There's no expenditure?
Expenditure.
So they're completely covering all the expenses themselves?
Yes.
What about chaperones and...
Yeah, it was all in there. Yeah. It's the two male coaches, and then they have two adult parents, females.
Right, but we don't have to cover any faculty fees or bus fees?
No, they cover that.
They cover that.
Okay. But I'm going to read the motion, yes?
Yeah, I was just thinking that there was some fee that I was just asking.
Not from what I saw here.
Okay, cool. Good to get this one out of the way. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the extracurricular trip request for the girls' cross-country team to go to the girls' cross-country team overnight camp at the NIU Laredo Taft Field Campus in Oregon, Illinois from August 13th and 14th, 2021, as presented in the June 8th, 2021 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Van Horst. Any discussion, any additional questions, since we are approving tonight? Seeing none? Would you do the roll call, please, Mary Ann?
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Zales?
Policy 6:185, remote learning.
Yeah, this is a first read again. I just want this to be on the board agenda packet. As you see, it provides the flexibility for the administration to implement a remote program. And again, I don't know if this is going to be required or not, but I think it's good to have it on here for a first read because this would be the policy legal is recommending to adopt should the guidance come out in mid-June from the state and it requires us to have some options available. This provides us the flexibility to do that under the school code.
So you're suggesting we have to keep it on here for another meeting and...
Just keep it on a meeting, have the board, just the board review the policy. I did not receive, again, I did not receive any questions or concerns. The footnotes are included to kind of give you an idea why they're, you know, the policy is laid out, why it is, but that's all. No action tonight.
Okay. And moving on to the final old business item is the creation of board committee and transition back to school. So we have discussed this previously. I shared with my colleague some thoughts based on some work the administration has already done in terms of planning ahead with some meetings that have taken place with faculty and staff for the coming year. And again, the thought process is to move these very important discussions out of this venue so we can focus on some board work and also allow the administration time to speak to their goals and the plans they have ahead for the '21-'22 school year in a, hopefully a format that's convenient for them and fairly intense about the questions that any of us may have, our members of the community. So this would be the creation of a special committee pursuant to our board rules. I would suggest that we find a date that is during business hours, before the Fourth of July, and before, as I understand it from Dr. Skinkis, people do planned vacations, and we want to make sure we're respectful of people's time and scheduling. So I'd like to see us move forward and create the committee and then get it scheduled, and Dr. Skinkis would bring in the respective administrators to address the topics that I had laid out. I talked about academic goals, executive functioning goals, social, emotional, well-being goals, and attendance goals for the coming school year.
Yeah, and I think the PowerPoint the board has seen now for the last couple of weeks and Friday updates and at the May meeting is kind of laying out like the schedule we're going to be following with five lunch periods. So it just provide an opportunity, you know, as I share with my administrative team today, the expectation would be that they would participate in the meeting so that there'd be a few minutes for each of them to speak to their areas and the things they're working on this summer. We will not have the finalized plan by the, you know, by the end of June, but my thought is, is if the, if the so-called guidance from the state is supposed to come out early next week or at the end of this week, it would provide us two weeks to prepare. Maybe we could do, you know, a short committee meeting, and we could, we could televise that or via Zoom. I have that going live on the website so anybody could participate and watch the meeting or come in person. We could all, the administrators can almost run it like the classroom experience that the remote learners and the in-person learners got this year. But then we'll maybe do another one towards the end of July as well, when we had an additional month to then finalize our plan so the board gets an opportunity here to final plan before the August start of the school year.
Yeah, the kind of massage.
The proposal is, the proposal on the table, though, is to create the committee, right?
Correct.
Correct. I'm just giving you how it would work.
Right, and so we could probably go some of those details, so we might want to read that motion, then if there's any discussion about, you know, creating the committee, let's get the committee created, and then we can go and...
Okay, that's, yeah. That's fine, if you want to go and read the motion, and then we can discuss at that point, if you would.
Sure. Creation of a board committee and transition back to school. Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the creation of a temporary board committee for the purpose of transitioning back to school as presented in the June 8th, 2021 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, so then our discussion is, do we think it's a good idea whether or not to create it? I'm totally in support of that. I think it's a great idea to, you know, to pull it out of regular meetings so that you can invest extra time in doing that. And then, you know, once we approve this, then you could talk about the details and how you want to schedule and stuff like that.
Well, sure, so I think, so now we've got a motion, we've got a second, we can discuss right now.
If anybody thinks we should not have a committee or have the committee, I'm totally in favor of it.
Right. And I think the details, in all honesty, would be left to the administration to set the final agenda and coordinate the administration.
No, it's our committee, so you set the agenda with, in conjunction with the administration. So it is our committee, and so you're working with the administration to set it. It's an open committee.
Right, no, you're right. So it's a committee of the whole, it's a special committee of the whole, which we've already created in the motion. You'll see what the purpose of it is. And so that is the creation of the committee. And the building of the agenda for, and whatever day is ultimately chosen, I think we'd like everyone's input, obviously, if we like to get attendance and participation, but that's not necessarily part of, if I'm following you, I don't think we need to have that, we can talk about that right now. So if you had some thoughts on specifics.
Well, it's a board committee, and so, you know, like you create this with input from the administration, you're also creating that agenda. That's what I'm saying, so.
Right, understood. Understood.
And I just think it's, I like the timeline, right? Like, get sort of, look at the guidance, get something, you know, do a little talking, then massage it, you know, and, because typically, you know, and not always and not everyone, but administrators take like...
Some time.
From, from, from the July 4th holiday to near the end of the month.
For us to, historically, it's usually the, after this board meeting till like after the July meeting, because we start school so early.
Right.
So usually, a lot of our administrators are using their vacation time the last two weeks of June, first two weeks of July.
Right, and if there are anybody that needs a break these days.
Sure.
Right?
Appreciate that.
It's anybody who worked in a school this year, right? Like, we've all kind of, I mean, they asked us if we wanted to do professional development this summer, and everybody was like, hard no, hard no, right? Like, no, we're not getting out of bed before 10 o'clock, right? So I like the timeline, I like the time, you know, so I think that's all good.
I think, I don't know that we can say it's only three meetings. I think we have the committee. Maybe as the committee is rolling on, you might want to clarify some of the purpose. How will you know that you've satisfied what you intended to do? You might want, in discussion, to formalize that a little better? Like, how do we know that we've answered all our questions and we're done? That might take three, it might take more than just a few meetings, if you're thinking?
No, and I think that's a fair point. So, you know, from talking to Dr. Skinkis and laying out those four general buckets, if you will, I think that sets the structure for that first meeting. I think we can see what kind of questions we may have and follow up. And to Dr. Skinkis's point, bring the group back if we need to right before the start of the school year. And if there's still an outstanding issue, there's no sunset to this. I mean, the purpose of the committee is obviously the transition to the '21-'22 school year. It wouldn't make sense to have that same committee meet next summer, right? So, I think it's with good assurance, the work of the committee would be done before the start of the school year, but there very well may be additional questions that arise. If, you know, you may have some specific curriculum questions that you want to get to the bottom of and require some follow-up. That might be a reason for the committee to continue and have a third meeting. But I think we need to start with the general structure and those four buckets. Here what the administration is working on, because they have a lot of efforts and plans already in place, and it's more of an information sharing, and then we can make a determination in more of a July timeframe.
And then I think the only concern I have, I know the first meeting we're going to do is a Zoom meeting during working hours, and I sent a text and I asked, you know, is this good? And I understand, you know, that administration is trying to take vacations. But because, I think further meetings, we might want to have, it would be my bias, to have when other people from the community can come and hear if they want to, because I think it's a valuable committee. I think what you're going to have to say is very valuable and important to families coming out of COVID. They're going to want to know what's going to happen, what's going to be different, how are you addressing it? And not everybody has discretionary time in the middle of their day, you know, to log into a Zoom meeting.
This will be published in the same way.
I'm assuming this will be a recorded Zoom meeting, so it's available in that way. There'll be, since it is a meeting.
If people are seeing, or have the opportunity to see it on their own time.
Well, most schools...
But you couldn't do public comment, or you couldn't come to speak.
In that first one, but I'm assuming that first one's going to be informational, kind of what we've already seen, but our ability to ask some questions, speaking to some of the topics that you want to...
For a larger audience, if you will, right.
Also.
We've also set the precedent now that if you want to email questions, right, in advance of, right, we've set that precedent with these meetings.
I think we did that during the emergency order.
Emergency, now that the June 11th is over and we're open, we can do some, let's take a minute to, we could add the email piece on, but like, realistically, most schools that do board committees, like that don't do advisory councils, they do them at 7:30 in the morning with two board members, the agenda's open to the public, and if somebody wants to come, they can come.
But...
So that's, I mean, so that's, so the fact that we're going to talk, we're going to broadcast it live on the website and have the Zoom so people could...
It's recorded, right?
During, it's recorded, and we have this set up so that if people during visitor comments wanted to either come in person or contribute via the Zoom, they could.
But this is not an advisory committee, this is a special committee of the whole. So the last time this board did a committee of the whole was when we went over all the policies, and we did it at night.
No, the last time we did it...
Yeah, that was prior to coming.
For facilities.
That was prior to coming.
We built the stadium, we had the special facility committee.
So, the advisory committee, and we did one with the curriculum committee where we had two board members, and we did them early in the morning. But the last time we had a special committee of the whole where everybody was involved, we did that when we had the $63 million renovation, and those were always at night.
I understand what you're saying.
And when we did the special committee of the whole, we did that when we did the revision of all the policies, and those were at night. So since this is a special committee of the whole...
Times have changed, though. The tool Zoom has made things more convenient for people, like what if all the board members can't get here that night?
Well, and I'm saying, the first one might be fine.
Could be more convenient for people to, right?
But I personally think that, like if you're teaching, you can't, so let's say it's not in the summer, in September, you're teaching, you can't participate in the middle. If you're a clinician, you won't be able to stop. If you have business meetings, you might not be able to get in there. I think the first one's fine, yes, let's be open to that, but I think to do all of them in the middle of the day through Zoom, it is not valuable to our, to the members of this community. It's a meeting of the whole. Let them come if they want, let them hear what we have to talk about. This is important. This is the harvest of everything that's happening. This is a win. This is something we should want to share. So I don't know why we would try to make it difficult for people to have to log on when they get back home.
I don't think we're trying to get that. I think we're trying to make it easy for all of us to get to it because we see the importance of it. But I understand your concern over access.
With people who work on computers all day, when they come home, they don't log into their computer.
There's definitely a certain...
I've done a year of it, I get it.
There's a certain movement in public sector meetings to have them in different times of the day, to be honest, to capture different shift workers or people who have childcare issues in the evening. So I think your point is valid, but since we historically meet at 7 o'clock at night, having this meeting during the day, I think because of our intended audience and our intended presenters, I think it absolutely makes sense to go ahead. And again, I don't know what that second meeting necessarily looks like. I think the agenda for the first meeting is pretty easy to contemplate because it's based on some material we've already been privy to. So I think some of it depends on, we can see how many people have downloaded the Zoom presentation. Is there really an interest? Are we getting public comment? Those should be factors we should take into consideration to do the second, and if we do need a third, a third.
And to find out, do people even know that we're having that meeting?
Well, and I think we can probably try to...
We'll have to advertise it and post it.
Put it on the website and...
Have to treat it just like a normal board meeting, Laura.
It's a public meeting.
Sure.
Otherwise, you violate OMA, right?
Right.
So we have a motion, we have a second, I think.
And a vote.
Yeah. Any more comments right now, or should we go and do a roll call? Could we do a roll call, Mary Ann?
It's actually, it's all in favor.
It's all in favor.
Because we're not spending any money.
Correct.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? I don't hearing none? Okay, so we will work then to look at the points and the agenda and make sure we can get the, it's the staff that want to make sure we're considerate of as well, making sure they're able to be present. Thank you. Visitor statement, second opportunity? Looking around again? Okay, just checking. We have no requested discussion items. Any consideration of items for future meetings? We don't have anything here that people have brought up. Matters for closed session, personnel, superintendent's annual goals, sale or lease of property, pending or imminent litigation, collective negotiations, school safety, confidentiality of closed session mission, minutes, excuse me. And then the, I just kind of moved to H, sort of threw me off right there. So I will go ahead and read the resolution. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, sale or lease of real property, probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, school safety, and confidentiality of closed session minutes. Second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
And Ms. Zales?
Yes. And, yep, there we are.